Say the recording will start soon.
Yeah.
Yeah. We should be good. Okay, so I will call this regular meeting of the Public Site and Building Commission to order at seven oh three. Start with the pledge, so please join me. Pledge allegiance. Okay, so no public input. No correspondence. And election of officers, I'd like to wait until the end of the meeting, so we can have more discussion on that. We'll get through our whole business first. Rule of meeting minutes, I make a motion that we approve the regular meeting minutes of July nine, twenty twenty five.
Second.
Roger, second. Anybody have anything that needs to get updated, corrected, et cetera? All good?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor? I opposed. I think Dave Orvath has to abstain because, yeah, he wasn't here.
Right, sorry, sorry.
Yep, that's okay. So into our old business, the animal shelter. And I don't see Jonathan's. I assumed he was coming, but I guess I shouldn't have done that.
They both sent an email. He sent an email to you saying that they, there was no update. He sent it out, as I saw.
Well, I saw an email because I specifically asked for information. And I got that, but it didn't go out to everybody, so I will. Hang on. So basically, with the animal shelter. We're kind of the same place. I got it. It went to me and Erica, because I emailed them without you, but I guess they put you on it too, or you just saw it?
They put me.
So John hasn't had any time to do anything more on the animal shelter, has been working on other things, et cetera, but we do know that there are new regulations that the state put in place. That will have to be taken into consideration once we start. Doing some planning and. John said that by the next meeting, he'll have a list of town-owned properties for us to review. For the shelter and hopefully, and you know, then we'll take a look at that, see. I still think it would be helpful to us to have some sort of either a consultant or someone. We narrow down some of the properties to have somebody look at it with us and say, that'll work, that won't work, that kind of thing. I don't want to take a town property that's really large and plop it there. When it could be used for something else, but we need a certain. Amount of space for parking and everything.
Yeah, wasn't he going to narrow it down till viable potential?
That's, that's what he said. So that's that. And then.
With that, though, that is also the viability of where it is now, right?
Like, I guess. We can have that be part of what we look at, because I think we need to look at. You know, if we take. Tear this down or build over here and then tear this down, is that enough space for the building, the parking and other requirements? And this is still too close to the swampy area out back, so we have to check on that. And for the highway garage roof, we had, we made a motion at the last meeting to take all those proposals to the Board of Selectment meeting, which I said was on the twenty second. But I was mistaken, it was on the fifteenth. So I realized that, contacted Dan Carter and said, we have this stuff. We have these proposals, I'll give you an update, et cetera. And then I didn't hear from him. In the meantime. Because of that insurance. Thing that John did send around to everybody, that Melanie put forward, that had to be given to each of the three. Vendor contractors. So that they could. Read it, and then they had questions. So then the questions went to Melanie and John and Eric were supposed to meet with Melanie yesterday, which is why I was hoping one of them was going to be on the meeting, because I don't know what came under that meeting.
You wrote about that in the email too. I thought he said he would report on Monday.
I said, we're meeting with Melanie tomorrow, which is yesterday. But I doubt we'll have the agreement signed by Wednesday. That's all. I don't know if there's anything more, but I didn't get anything more.
So the good news is that they were sent out to those vendors and they're.
Yes, they're not backing off, but they're still, I think they had some questions. So I think what, when I, you know, what we might have to do too is find out what's. He sent that thing around for us to read. What now is going to be the processes? Every time we ask for a quote from someone, do we also have to give them that? Document to review and say, while you're putting your quote together, take this into consideration.
I mean, it would make sense, because you don't want to waste their time if they're not going to.
Right, right. So we're gonna have to see, get all more information on that, so we know going forward, how that might impact. Costs that people give us, et cetera.
And that's not just for us, that's for everything within the town, I think, right?
Yeah. I mean, you probably have to use it too, if you're asking for somebody, Public Works.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not just, you know, construction, building, it's, you know, a lot more of Public Works and Highway Department, what's that?
Everyone's had questions.
Yeah, okay, well. I'll get those questions answered. So I will check what, what I was thinking I would do is. The next. Board of Selectment meeting is the beginning of August, August like sixth or something like that. And if all this is ready. By then, then we, one of us would go to, yes, the fifth, August fifth. I usually go, I have to, so the Public Site and Building Commission, doesn't say the chair, but the Public Site and Building Commission has to give the Board of Selectmen an update every quarter. Doesn't say which quarter, how the quarters are figured out, I try to do it when the taxes are due, which is now. Sometimes I don't. Get to it right away, I might go a month later, whatever, depends on what's going on and whether there's any new information to cast along. So we'll see about doing that in that next meeting on August fifth. Hopefully, all three of these proposals will be ready. To bring to the Board of Selectmen at that point, so because they assigned us these. Projects with no money, so we have to figure out about how do we start getting some money together. To be able to make the next steps. Because the three proposals for the assessments, the two for the structural and architectural, architectural. The MEP looks like. It's not really an assessment, it's more of a. Partial assessment, but also they're going to design the sprinkler. Not for that amount of money, but they're going to put together some ideas for the sprinklers. And then John said that. He found out through finance that. Adding the sprinklers wouldn't save the town a significant amount of money on insurance. So do we still sprinkler it? I would think.
I think you gotta look at the cost, right?
Well, look at the cost, but also the kind of.
Equipment.
Equipment that's there, yes. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, but they've been there for. Right, they've always been in that garage, right?
Right, but that doesn't.
So the risk has been, never caught fire yet, right?
Well, but.
But if you're, if you're talking more than, more than the value of the equipment of the truck, you know, you don't know how much, I'm just saying, you really need to know how much that is.
Sure, sure, sure. So I mean, that's where we are with that.
And again, they don't need to park it inside, right? If there's an issue with building, make it parked.
They could, but.
I mean, I agree, the sprinklers make sense, but if it's double the cost of the roof itself.
Right, great. That's why we need to get these assessments done, because we can't really make.
Hello, the audio's gone to crap on my end, I don't know if it's.
Yeah, mine too, David.
Okay. Nancy? Nancy? The audio. Robot right now.
I don't know what to tell you because.
Arbitrator. Can I know better?
How about now?
How about now? Can you hear us better?
Yeah, it's better.
Okay.
All right. So something. Something that I was going to email you about Kathy, but we might need to get, is Jack still IT? I was on my zoning meeting last night. On Google meetings. And during the meeting, their discussion. Was probably because I was. Had my earbuds in and everything, and it probably sounded like what they were hearing. Because it was echoey and there were some weird noises in the, it was almost like people were talking in the background, but people weren't talking in the background.
He just put in new stuff in there.
Now, I've noticed that when, when they tell us that they, that. They're getting either feedback when they're hearing us, et cetera. When I go to the recording of the meeting, it's fine. So there's something, something. I'll bring it up to Jack, sorry. So you changed microphones, you can hear us now, sorry. Basically, we were saying, Dave, that the. Highway Garage and the Animal Shelter, we were working on getting some assessments done for the Highway Garage roof. Structural, architectural MEP. And all, we have the proposals, I didn't take them to the Board of Selectmen meeting because they weren't. They didn't go through all the insurance, newer insurance requirements yet. Hopefully, they'll get done soon and I can take it to. The Board of Selectmen meeting in August. And I guess that's kind of like you said, what is the. There's something about the structure that's been brought up, that's why we went on a little walk.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
All the steel's twisted.
Yeah, so that has to be looked at and, and how do we? Fix it, how do we replace it, to, because we can't just take the roofing material off and put new, because I think there's something about the roofing materials also. An integral part of the.
And what's the risk?
Structure. Wait, what?
It's a structural part of a Butler building, that's how they're designed, they're all integrated.
Yeah. So I think that all that has to be taken, that's what we're get, we're going to get, that's what we're expecting to get. We're asking to get from that assessment that's going to be done by a structural guy, so. And all the, I guess all their contacting of Orgazie is they're not responding, so. We're just gonna have to take it up on our own. So that should be it for that right now. And I will always make sure I check with them to make sure one, that, one of them will attend, if not, give us a good report. So we have information to work with.
Yeah, it'd be nice to know what questions are coming out.
Yeah.
About the insurance.
Insurance, yeah, yeah. Yeah, they were going to deal with it with a meeting with Melanie, so. Because they need to know too. Because of Public Works and how they're going to handle it with all these other projects.
Everything they work on, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, because you read.
But it would be good for us to know too.
Exactly, because the current, the current vendors that are fixing the roads or even fixing the water lines, they probably have the same type of paperwork to do.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. But like I said, we'll need to know this for. Any future projects, so they get included in anything, interpretation with bid or RFP that we send out. All right, anything else on? That, we'll just move on to the. High school HVAC upgrade. Rick has. A new schedule, I think you said?
Yeah, so a number of things to report today, so let's, let's kind of go where we are. Okay, so my discussions with. Save More this week, sent me off an email, the structural supports for all the chases is currently being installed. The DOAS units supports will be installed, begin to be installed this week. They're continuing to run the refrigeration lines with the VRF system. Third floor is complete, they're finishing up on this, they're currently working on the second floor. The condensate drains are done on the third floor as well and nearly complete on the second floor. The ductwork is being installed on the second floor and the third floor is nearly complete. Electrical is completed to the VRF units and they are currently installing the feeds to DOAS units. They'll start cutting the flooring and the penetrations between the floors next week. And all abatement is complete. Okay, so, so they are, they are onsite, doing. Doing their work and making a lot of progress. We did receive an updated schedule after. Much prodding, if you will, so it's been a little bit, and I reached out to Nancy and let her know, it's been a little bit of an issue trying to get schedules. Two-week look ahead schedules and, in contractor sign-in sheets, okay, so I, you know, as of yesterday, we had a meeting and I, you know. He got a little heated with every, with everything going on, I think it's, it's difficult, they're moving along, they're doing a good job, I think he's having trouble with, with day-to-day schedules and. And in the heat of, in the heat of all their, their work in the middle of the summer and the heat that we've had, I think it's kind of catching up with them. Point blank asked them, you know, with, with the new schedule, which I'll, I'll present to you. You know, are, are we still on target? And he's, he's very confident, yes, we still are on target. In fact, his, his schedule, which I'll. Bring up to you shortly, still has the same date, so he hasn't, he hasn't leaked out at all. To move on that, when, you know, approached about the contractor sign-ins and the two, had two-week look ahead. His response was basically, well, they're in touch with. With David Belcourt, the custodian, and, you know, they're trying to, you know, keep him informed every day with what's going on the next couple of days. David happened to be, was on the meeting as well, and, you know, he. He seemed to think it was, it was working okay, that he was able to get his summer work done, but to be honest with you, it wasn't, didn't really sound all that thrilled, to be honest with you. So there, there is a little communication. Difficulties happening there. I do plan on going out with. John from Colorado on Monday to check progress and see exactly what's going on out there and, you know, take that. Just to make sure that things are going as, as we, as we think. Oops, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna share my screen with you. To show you the updated schedule, which is, which is posted on the website.
Oh, did you make him co-host? Kelsey's gonna have to make you co-host.
Oh, okay. Unless you.
I'm not signed in.
Unless you just want to go on, onto that and, you know, pull up under schedules.
Right there, add his co-host.
That way down is that.
Right there. Okay, you should be able to screen share now.
Okay.
I knew he was gonna share, so I didn't sign in, so.
No, they're all cloudy.
All right, can you see that?
Yeah, kind of if you scroll through it.
Yeah, no, I'll scroll through it, this was kind of the bottom of the first page, so everything up above is, is completed. But just looking through it, I mean, obviously, there's a couple of, of spots here that are incorrect, because they haven't been done yet and the time has passed. With that being said, as of our last meeting, they are concentrating on working to get out of the building. So they can, you know, when school starts, I think we have what, seventeen days, seventeen school days left before the teachers come back? So, you know, we're up against the clock and then they go to second shift again, so. Just wanna. Make that, so. As we move forward, and that's what I'm saying is right. Structural steel installation, six sixteen to seven seven, and install the heat pumps and the DOAS units, which was July first. That will be happening. Like I said, they will be doing, starting the structural steel later, later this week, or, or this week, it was later this week, earlier, but it should be happening now. Then if we move forward. You know, they still have infill louvers, which is eight eleven to eight twenty-five, the hydronic piping, which is, which is happening. Moving forward. They will be getting the DOAS units onto the roof, I did ask them point blank in our meeting yesterday, as far as getting things onto the roof before kids come into school. And they will be getting that up on the roof, so they can, they can not have to worry about it when, when students are, teachers and students are around. All right, and then the, you can see with the, you know, install the exhaust fans and kind of moving down. Through the list.
So. You said that they are going to get all the. Pick all the. Equipment onto the roof before school starts?
Correct.
And then other things that. That looks like needs to be. Like installing the exhaust fans, if that finishes nine-one, that's going to have to be done. Different hours because. Kids will be there. Kids will be there and once school starts, they're gonna have to go back to.
The second shift, yeah.
They understand that?
They, they, they know that, I brought it to the last couple of meetings, and in fact, we're talking, you know, talking to David, when the teachers come back, does that mean, you know, we just wanted to be sure that the. Custodial calendar is then changing as well, so I think right now the custodians, if I'm not mistaken. Are on first shift and not second shift.
Right, well, they're, they're usually early, yeah, they, in the summertime, they work six in the morning till. So if you have to do anything at schools with custodians, you gotta go by that schedule. They also, some schools. Kind of quote shut down at the beginning of August to prep for school to start. It means like the staff's not, except for custodial staff, they're not, I don't know, Tyler, do they still do that? Custodial staff's in there, you know, polishing floors and doing everything ready to get. By mid-August, get teachers, staff and kids starting, you know, to be ready to come in. If they do that, are they still going to be able to work?
We're not, we're not really in a place where we're able to shut down as much as I wish we could, so the answer to your question, Kathy, is we, we're not going to change the schedule. And force the contractors out, because there's going to be plenty of activity in the building that I'm unable to control.
So are there parts of the building you could do that to and get?
No, but those parts are already going to be complete, the, the parts where the custodians need to be able to spend the attention is where the project is, be, because of the lack of two-week look ahead. We're now at the point, though, where, because they have not been giving us a two-week look ahead, and even when they have communicated. Their intent for, for a hypothetical two weeks, they then change it mid-week. We're at the point where I've told Dave, he has to start getting into rooms and get our cleaning done, and the project's gonna have to work around us to some extent.
Right. So then will they go back to, will Save More go back to working their afternoon? Evening shifts once. School gets.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's in their calendar that they know that, I think it's the eighteenth, if I'm not mistaken, that they need to go into second shift.
So you might let Save More know that if they can't get their. Communication and paperwork. In a better place, that we might have to have our communication and paperwork. Hold theirs up, like when that time they bring us an application for payment, we may have to consider. Waiting.
Yep.
It's fair enough, right?
Yep.
Go ahead, Dave.
So my question is, is Save More gonna come back and say, now that we have to do second shift again, we're gonna have to up our price?
No, no, it's always been in the schedule, that's, that's never been, that's never been an issue, that's always been in the schedule.
Right. Because I just don't want to hear, you know, to Nancy's point, like three months from now, oh, we had to make changes to do that, this, that and the other thing, and, you know, here's a thirty thousand dollar overtime bill.
Yeah, which is exactly the reason why asking for the, you know, the schedules all, all the time. Yeah. Just because I want to know, you know, if there's something that they're scheduled to do, we should know that now. Not, not later, so. Thank you for your diligence.
So should we write them a little memo saying that? I don't know, something about they're not doing the even two-day look ahead. As asked for by, not just by us, but by the schools and the school staff, Board of Ed staff. That. That plus, we've been waiting for those change orders. And if they're waiting on the change orders, because they have to wait and see what's really going to get done. And how much that's going to affect whether they're, you know, there's a couple of things that might be within the allowance amount, if that's within the allowance amount, great.
Right.
They just need to, I don't, I don't know what else to do to get them to.
Yeah, and I think I'll be honest with you, I think it's, you know, it's summer slammers, you know, it happens every summer with a lot of different projects, as you well know. But it's not an excuse, but I've been waiting for a few of these things for six weeks now. And it's, you know, I, I, I hear it's, you know, meeting with them on Friday and you should have it, you know, tomorrow or the next day, and two weeks go by and nothing, not that, not that I wait two weeks before I, I hound them again, but. They're very aware, and I tell them, you know, we only meet every two weeks, so if you don't get it to me now, you're waiting two weeks for the, for the answer.
Right, but they knew the schedule had time, it was, the, the schedule was. The idea of the schedule was in the RFP. They answered it, they put together a price and.
They must have approved the schedule, right? Contractually, they must have agreed to update it when necessary, whatever, right?
Yeah, and it's, it's that, that they're. That they're, you know, he's doing the schedule, even though, says, you know, things will change day-to-day, as Tyler mentioned, which, which they do, but as I mentioned to him, it's like, you know, you need a plan. If you, if you don't have a plan, you're not gonna, you're not gonna reach it. So, you know, his bigger thing was, you know, something like the two-week look ahead, he's like, well, that wasn't, that wasn't contracted, you know, if you wanted to do that, I'll give you, you know, I'll figure you a change order, we just don't have time to do a two-week look ahead every week. You know, and that's. He said, he said, they don't, you know, they don't work, I said, I've done them on every project I've done, and they do work.
A manpower issue?
I don't think it's a manpower issue, you say they're there, they're doing the work and they're getting it done, it's just, they're walking in and. Saying that they're going to be working in these three rooms over here, and they're going over to three other rooms, this kind of with the way I'm looking at it, because. If they're giving you some sort of even a day-to-day idea, and as Tyler said, they're, you know, and Rick said, they're working with the custodian. And saying, we're gonna do this, and then they're going and doing something else the next day, I don't know if it's the subs aren't showing up or what, so.
And they do have, they do have a working supervisor, Tyler, that, that's correct, I mean, Joey, he's basically a working supervisor.
I think he's been through, I mean, my, my opinion without. Save More confirming this, is that Jason is at like the vice president level of the Save More company, and I think Joey is honestly just a senior. Laborer that is onsite, and I, I think Jason's too high of a position, so he's not acting as a project manager and developing the schedule. And I don't think that's actually Joey's role, and I think he's kind of become the scapegoat when, every time we question Jason. So I, I think Save More actually has a missing. Level of oversight in here. But. You know. I don't think we're gonna get a change out of them, I think the only way we get a change is if we hold up the work and say, you're not moving forward until we do this, but we're up against the timeline to finish the project. And meet the state requirements, so we really can't hold up the work, and I think they kind of know that to some degree.
Yeah, and I think, you know, with our visit Monday, you know, I, I just want to be sure that what they're telling me is getting done, is getting done. I'm gonna work with John and Tyler, I don't know if you're free or not, but we haven't confirmed the meeting for two o'clock on Monday, but we did mention it on our meeting yesterday. So, you know, that's our intent, and, you know, I. But uh we did mention it on our meeting yesterday, so um you know, that's our intent and um you know, I. If you know, in in my gut, I think they're, you know, really trying to meet the schedule and they and they haven't been nickel diming us to to death. With change orders, well, obviously they're not giving us change orders, but eve- even the ones we've had. Uh you know, they're not doing that to us. I think they they have their best interest in mind, but but uh we just need a way of tracking them. I think to make sure that they're they're on schedule and and uh you know, within budget.
Yeah, I don't think they're trying to be obstinate. I just, again, I think they're missing a level of oversight. Uh and so they don't have somebody that is coordinating all of their different trades and and kind of managing the day to day. And it's kind of just a uh they give me an idea or they give Dave an idea of where they think they're gonna be. And then they realize they didn't talk to one or multiple trades and that whole thing doesn't actually work. And now all of a sudden, they're in the area they told me they weren't gonna be in. I mean, we're doing our best to work around them. Um and but like I I just mentioned, we're at the point where I've I've instructed Dave. If they tell us that, hey, on Monday, we're not gonna be in these three rooms, you're you're going in those three rooms and if they. Try to change their schedule, they have to work around us like.
Exactly, yeah.
Not trying to hold up the project, but I also have to get the school ready for the school year, so.
Yep.
Okay.
And then they've known that for months and you know, there there's a there's school responsibilities that need to happen along with this project, so it's it's no surprise to them.
Yeah, there shouldn't be and they thought other work for schools, I think, in that little smaller. But they've done other schools too, so they should know.
Okay. Alright.
So you might wanna ask that on Monday with whoever's showing up. Um Rick, if that meeting actually happens on Monday, ask them who is the person that's doing the coordination and the the actual. Kind of coordination management of. Cause that would make it a whole lot easier to get a like even a couple of day look ahead.
Sure, sure.
And Rick, I'm up, I I'm curious if I'm not there with you when you ask, I'm curious to hear the answer you get. Cause I have asked that question uh and Jason has always pointed the finger to Joey and then when I've gone and discussed with Joey, he's always. He doesn't come right out and say it, cause I'm sure he's trying not to throw his boss under the bus, but he is visibly surprised. Whenever I ask him for the schedule and tell him, I I just heard from Jason that you're supposed to be developing it, so.
Right.
I I think there's a disconnect there.
So Rick.
Save More's problem, but we're we're suffering the. The consequences of it.
Right. So Rick, um who are you meeting with or who are you supposed to meet with on Monday?
Uh Jason's supposed to be there as well as uh John Mangeli from uh Colorado.
Colorado. So I would um keep Tyler apprised so that if he's available and wants to be there too, uh he can be.
Yep. Certainly will.
Hey Tyler, do you have a schedule for your custodial guys that has you ready for school? Um given the circumstances right now?
No, uh not one in print. Our schedule is out the window because the project schedule has shifted so many times. Based on what they've told us, where where they told us they were gonna be and then where they showed up. Um so we we're, we have been completely working around the project. Like I said, now we're at the point though where when they tell us, hey, this is our two week plan or our next week plan. I've I've directed my head custodian to have his guys in the rooms. They tell us they aren't gonna be in and if they show up to try and work, they're gonna have to. Re rework their schedule around us. And we'll we'll get it done. It's just, we're at the point where we can't give them any more leeway and grace. To bounce around like they have been.
Yeah, and that's more than fair.
Yeah, and I think Rick, if Tyler's not able to be there at the meeting Monday, if the meeting. We should get the confirmation, the meeting is actually gonna happen and they're all gonna be there. Tyler's able able to be there, great, he can say what he just said and if he's not, then you're gonna have to say it.
Yeah, yeah, I don't have any any problem with that.
Okay.
I got a question. Is there a date, only because it's not something you call the day before, I don't think they own one. Is there a date for when the crane is supposed to show up? Do we have a hard date that says?
I do not have that.
I mean, like, I, that's not something you call the day before. I mean, usually that's booked.
Right.
Advance, so if they don't have a date, we'd have to assume, I think, that they have not scheduled it. Unless, you know, they have one sitting in their yard, it's not something you typically book within a week.
Yeah, I don't know that they have a, I don't know that they have a crane and the materials are in their yard.
So can we find that out too?
The units aren't on site yet to be moved?
Uh no, no, though I believe that they're gonna bring them in on the truck and take them off the truck.
Yeah, I I have not received a date, which, you know, for better or for worse, I I guess at least. I don't have information that Rick hasn't received, um but I did ask the question of what their plan was if they planned on staging equipment. And I was told that they planned on the the rigor that they plan to use for the crane has the material at their yard and they're gonna bring it. When they plan on craning, so it's gonna come in on a flatbed and get taken off the flatbed, put straight on the roof.
Well, the schedule shows it being done between. Yeah, between.
Exactly.
The fifteenth, which is done already.
That was one, that was one of the two lines that I made, I highlighted that uh I said, didn't make sense.
Yeah, yeah. Actually, they said they were gonna do it on the first and it's that's.
Right.
That's something too that.
So gotta switch them on that, cause not only do they have to have the crane schedule, they. You need to move the crane, sometimes they move them early in the morning and. Get them in place before there's too much traffic on the road.
For these, I don't think they need that large, but that isn't real, you know.
Yeah.
But again, weather's probably a concern too for moving.
Yep.
Those units, so.
So.
Hopefully I'll have a lot more information, though I'll distribute it that one, you know, I'll I'll send out a report before our next meeting. On what I what I discover at on Monday's meeting.
Okay.
Just so everybody can have an update.
Okay.
Alright.
Anything else for us?
Uh just as far as budget, so really I I've uh updated the budget so that all the invoices are in there. Um but nothing has changed uh with the with the balance left in in contingency, so we're still at the one oh two. Almost one oh three in contingency, alright. Um and I know there was a question last meeting in regard to the um the SES reports and the Colorado reports and they they are also in the in the drive. Um anybody wanted to see those? And then uh the last thing I have is we did get confirmation that the um. The Commission on Human Rights and Opportunities, there, we've been holding out seven percent retainage. Of all their of all their six payment applications thus far, uh typically it's it's five is the um the the state. Regulation, but um. Uh we've been holding out two percent extra until they got this this whole program approved and it finally came through, I think, ten sent it out yesterday. Uh so there is an approval on that, so future payment of that applications will have five percent retainage. And um we will have a reconciliation um. Bill probably that's gonna be for about twenty four thousand dollars to to gain the two percent back from the from the previous six applications. But just wanted to make everybody aware of that. That's not an extra charge, it's just um money, money that we withheld uh their retainage. Uh based on the contract.
Will that happen at the end of the project or will that be in the their next application?
Uh I don't think it'll be in their next application, but um you know, we'll we'll see about the the following.
And we'll see about.
I I get, I don't know that there's any date that it needs to happen by, but um you know, if we don't, we don't get our our change orders and whatnot, we'll. We'll uh. Hold hold back if need be.
Yeah, I think we need to hold some things over their head to get them moving.
Right.
And I I I don't think it's a bad thing for you to say. Who's really supposed to be doing this and why isn't it getting it done, meaning mostly the scheduling, the the two week look ahead. And. Doing the scheduling in a way that is coordinated with. The school staff.
Yep.
Hey Tyler, if you were to get behind schedule, do you have the ability to staff up custodial from maybe other schools or? Uh.
Nope.
Else to to. Get it done now.
No, be- because of budget, the only way to do that would be overtime and I don't have overtime budget, so.
Would you be able to backcharge or is that a question for the group? Could we backcharge Save More if you had to charge overtime?
I don't know the answer to that, to be honest.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, Rick, you can mention that to them.
Yeah.
Rather than holding up payments, I could see a backcharge situation being a little more effective.
Uh Tyler, would you be able to, do you have a number of rooms that you need to get done per day till uh the next fifteen days? Um you know, just tell them we need three rooms a day or five rooms a day, whatever that might be and you know, these are the ones we're taking.
Um yeah, we could, I don't have it off the top of my head.
Right, right.
But I can confer with Dave Belcourt and we could certainly come up with that very easily.
Yeah, if you could, let's do that and uh you know, whatever block of rooms you need, um I would, you know, keep them. Keep them close together, if you will, and then uh. You know, we'll give it to Save More. Put it on them, let them work around us.
And uh that's essentially what we're, we have gotten to that we I've directed Dave to do, but yeah, we can, we can get the block. You know, blocks and give it back to them of. This is our our schedule now and you figure out how to work around it.
Right.
And once they get the rooms done though, is that gonna keep them from going in there and doing work if they still have work to do?
No, but they're gonna have to then protect the floor and clean up after themselves, which I will give. Save More has done a very good job of cleaning up after themselves. I can't say how good of a job, but based on, based on their cleanliness, I have some level of hope that they would do a good job of protecting. They have not had to protect any floors, that's why we've stayed out of the construction area. Um but once the floors are done, then they're gonna have to protect the floors as well.
Okay. Okay, Rick, anything else?
I think that's all I have unless anybody has any further questions.
Yeah, weren't you ordering the panels last time, the electrical panels, all that stuff, is that?
Yeah, that's been on order, that's on order, so uh there's no lead that, at this point, I'm told there's no lead time issues.
Okay, and wasn't there something about cutting the floor or something? Did you have a workaround you had to figure out?
Yeah, there's a workaround, but um in yesterday's meeting, um Jason mentioned that they're gonna be doing the boxes, but. Um no mention of an additional additional charge, because you know, that was the recommended uh way to do it, but. Um. He just mentioned, you know, as directed by Colorado and that they're gonna go ahead and do that. Was it was the three um the three units that we had to, the conduit was in the floor.
And then there was a mice issue with those wires, but that's on the school side, not you got about the uh for the project.
Correct, Tyler, I think that was kind of put on the back burner with IT.
IT has looked at it, um I don't know. IT's exact plans for it, um but yes, that's not gonna hold up the project. It's something that. Even the wire molding could go back once the project's ready for it and IT can fish the wires back through the wire mold after, if need be.
Okay, thanks. And then how about uh masonry work and soffit work, change orders and credits on the platform, any of that?
None of, none of, none of those PCOS have been have been submitted. And again, I was told last Friday that he should have it or Monday, that he should have it Tuesday. I said, you know, we may not be able to vote on it, but I just wanna be able to present it, uh you know, with the cost structure that's there. Um again, my hope is that uh the the soffit work as well as within the allowance. And then uh you know, we have somewhat of a wash between the other two, but um I'm not, you know, I'm. That's conjecture, not uh not not based on fact.
Right, so you'll keep pushing them on all that?
Yep.
Okay. Anything else for Rick or Tyler?
I'm all set, thank you.
Alright, great.
Thanks.
Thank you, Rick, thank you.
Thank you, bye bye.
Thank you, Jeff.
Good night.
Take care.
Alright, so.
That's another question quick. Um who's paying Rick? I mean, he's.
STV.
Part of the project.
Yeah, he's part, he's part of STV, they, we asked for proposals. We got proposals from four different companies, we chose them.
Okay. STV, alright.
Yep.
Thank you.
They're our our owners. Representative, owner's project manager. And mostly it's, there was a different guy that started at the very beginning, but then Rick took over.
And some of those, does the town ever have their own personally that or no, it's always an outside, like so those projects, is there a town to play that?
No, well, sometimes.
Clerk of the works or someone.
Yes, so it's the same, it's an owner's representative, owner's project manager. There sometimes have a person that does that for the town, we don't. So we've, when we did the police station in the library, we didn't have somebody which was.
Yeah, it seems to make sense.
Idea because.
Seems to make sense having somebody.
In hindsight, we could have probably saved money, but for the school projects, we insisted on it, we put that in the budget. We had STV, they did an excellent job right through the end of the project. And saved us a lot of money.
Yeah, no, I mean, seems to be working out.
Well, cause they, you know, you get these, they're really, really big projects, you get all these contractors showing up with change orders and.
Oh, yeah.
We can't always, we're looking at it, we're like looking at a change order, I mean. Is it out of scope or is it not? We don't know, and they would help us review all that stuff and.
Give them opinions as far as.
Yep.
No, makes complete sense.
And the meetings they have, the owner's project manager, OAC owner, architect contractor, construction manager. Meetings they have, they 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 iron out all the problems, they don't bring them to us, which is good, cause we'd be here till midnight. Trying to figure out what to do, so.
Yeah, no, definitely.
Yeah, so that's something we have to think about, like, do we have those for like the highway garage roof? An animal shelter or is it gonna be John? We gotta get some clarification on that because. Cause that's always an additional amount that you have to add into a budget to do that. And construction managers will always say, oh, well, we work for you, you don't really need one. Somebody's gotta keep an eye on everybody.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so.
Is there a certain contract amount that would make sense to have a? Like if it's over a million or.
There's a certain, well, there's a certain percentage sometimes that you look at a project and say. You know, owner's project manager could be this percent, so it's often not too low. Uh people that do these know how to kind of. Scope out projects and come up with a price that's fair. Um STV with this one at least. As I said, I don't know if it was the last meeting or the meeting before, may go a little bit over because they were involved with the contract negotiations. With Save More and that wasn't part of what their proposal included, that's out of scope, so we have to look at that. So again, we're gonna have to think about how do we do these other projects and um. Cause there needs to be, you know, not us, somebody day to day who's keeping an eye on all that, cause we can't do it.
Yeah, no, there is something for the town or like a rich.
Yep. Alright, and then the municipal center renovations, I don't have anything to do on that. Um and then going back to election of officers. So we we kind of have to think about, we have to do something. We've been putting it off partly because we don't have everybody here a few times, that's fine. But somebody else other than me needs to be, start doing this so that once somebody. Because once somebody's found to take my place and appointed and then I'm, I'm gone, I don't, my. Term is expired and the charter says you serve until someone replaces you, so. I don't have to get reappointed right now, but I'm not going to get reappointed, so as a member. Somebody else has to be chair, somebody else has to be vice chair and. That I, it's, I think someone started now would be great, because then I don't wanna just go away and leave.
What are you saying then, if somebody is nominated as the chair, you're gonna, you stay?
No, I I'm staying till someone takes my place as a member.
As a member of a commission.
So like if somebody becomes chair or they run the next meeting, I'll be here, I'll be.
Yeah.
You know, do this, don't do that, kind of hoping yet.
I'm sorry.
So, yes, which is why I said I would stay on.
Right.
So that, cause like lots of people are, you're all new.
Right, right.
They's been around for a little while, but. They've been around for a little while, but he's newer. And, and Dave Olson is also, he's been reappointed, but as soon as someone is found to take his place, he's gonna resign. So, we need to get going on, and it's a good time, because, the HVAC thing is moving along.
Yeah.
It's doing its thing. The other two are new, the garage, highway garage roof and the animal shelter, so, why not get started on something new? It's like there's, there's running meetings, and then there's the sort of sometimes keeping in touch with what's going on. So as the chair, you can kind of run the meeting and know what's coming up, but, and I've said before, you can't, we can't, we as a commission, can't have discussions about projects, by email, by phone, by hanging out at Broken Symmetry and chatting. We have to do it all in a meeting, so, um, but I would also, you know, I'd make sure that you, it would be great if there was some kind of little booklet that the town had, is this is how you run projects in town. Doesn't exist, and each project's been a little bit different, some of them, like the school projects, the two renovations, the Board of Ed, put together a ad hoc committee to hire architects. And there was one or two public site members that were part of that, so a couple of Board of Ed members, worked like the Board of Education. Couple of staff members, a couple of public site members, all interviewed, they put an RFP out, they interviewed all these architects, they picked, the one they picked. With the understanding that once, that there was no money, except for, what they had put together to pay the architects to get started. And once the, the amount came up to go to referendum, it was understanding with, with the architects, when they were signing initial contracts, that, if the money that was, went to referendum was, didn't get passed, everything would stop, they'd pay the architects how much they had done to that point, back to the drawing board. That didn't happen, that was good. So then the Public Site and Building Commission was brought in to do the rest of the not that ad hoc committee, rest of the overseeing, and basically having, as I said, STV on board to keep an eye on, they had a, project manager on site between the two schools for, big every day, well, I don't know if they were there every day, they might have been there like a good chunk of the day. That was part of their budgeted amount, their proposed amount, their contract amount. And they did that, and then there was a project manager, Darryl, and who did paperwork stuff and came to meetings and, ran the OAC meetings and made sure everything moved the way it was supposed to move. You don't always know if you're gonna have that, because there's always a little pushback, when you want to put some more money in a budget to hire somebody else to do the overseeing, but, money well spent, so. Um, so that project, they had the architect first, and then they, and then other projects, you've had to put together the whole entire budget, have that go to referendum and get approved before you can even get started, police station. They're run pretty much the same way, it's just a little bit different, how you get the funding together, but it's not a, like written in stone kind of thing.
Alright, so like you said,
The board of finance does that.
Well, so,
Funding and all that.
Yes, they, so it has to go through the board of selectmen, through the board of finance. And then if it's above a million dollars, you gotta go to a referendum, if it's below a million dollars, you have to have a special town meeting, whoever shows up votes on it, done deal. So, we don't, literally have no legal authority as a commission, or as individuals as part of the commission. When I sign the invoices, it's because that money's already been approved. I can't sign contracts.
Yeah, you're not writing checks yourself.
No, you couldn't sign a contract, you know, it's like, it has to be done by the owner, who, owner is the town, and as a representative of the town, it's usually the first selectman that does the signing. So, you know, that's why everything sort of channels through us, but then it has to go where it has to go to get approved and signed and et cetera.
So we kind of coordinate the process, or part of the process, to make sure,
And oversee, it's like,
All the boards are informed.
Yes. It's like a, it's transparency, is basically what it is. So if there was a, a department, like if Public Works ran all these things, because they had a huge staff to do it, then the town, the public couldn't see what was going on, so there's like a whole transparency thing, and so if the, we're spending taxpayer money, because the budget, when we vote on the budget in April and it's approved, those budget amounts for all the different departments that's out there, there, you can see it at the town website, you know where the money's gonna get spent, there's reports, et cetera. Now, this is separate from the town budget, this is a capital project where, the money has to be approved at some point, however, you know, like I just said, either at a town meeting or a referendum. Once it's approved, you spend it according to the way the budget's laid out. And, um, if you're, I don't know, running out of money, or you have change orders or whatever, all that has to, change orders have to get signed by the first selectman. It's a whole process. Not dissimilar to how construction projects happen anyways, it's a little slower. Because you have to go through all these hoops, so, so, election of officers.
Alright, so I'll make a motion to nominate Roger as the chairman. That's right, yeah.
I need a second.
Uh, yeah, and then if Roger actually, you know, wants to do it.
Um, seconds it? Are you okay with that?
Are you interested in?
Oh, okay, so, uh, my comment is, the answer is yes, I'd be very happy to. And I would, however, I would say we would make it like effective, like September first, just so, I have to learn.
I would make it effective immediately. No, I'm not gonna,
Yeah.
Yes.
Do that, and I believe Tom Walso said that uh, as a separate issue, that he would be the deputy or, or,
He would need a motion.
No, no. Do that, but it's, we can discuss.
Do that, and then, to be honest with you, I would also, maybe the, the right term is not delegate, but I would, try to have the members of the commission here kind of take a little bit of a share of that, so, as an example, Dave, I want, I would ask Dave to lead this or something, and Jeff to do this.
No, that's,
I want to do that, just so it's not all on one person.
Yeah.
So that we all are in the process.
Yes.
That makes sense.
At any time, if I'm sick, you're proud or good.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, you can, if you can, if you need somebody, things like that too, right, yeah, yeah. And Nancy will probably help with your experience as far as kind of structuring that, and you would mention, in the past, you did like subcommittees, like, you know,
Yeah.
Dave and Jeff working on this project, and let me know what's going on with the roof next meeting or something like that, yeah, yeah. So you're like, you said you're kind of delegating that.
Yeah.
I, I think that would be wise, and I think that would be, and that would help everybody.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I would think.
Yes.
Completely agree. See, I mean,
My suggestion.
New we all are.
Yes, yeah, my suggestion is that, that, that you become, we vote, you become chair, we vote for a vice chair, whatever we're gonna call it. That happens immediately, you run the next meeting, I'll be here to, because it's September, I might be gone for a while. So I don't think we wait, I think we get started right away.
I don't think there's anybody beating the door down from coming, a member of the, right?
Well, there's a few people that were considering it, and I don't know what happened, they, you know, I, I was honest with the one guy that came and, he's my neighbor, you know, here's some timeframes you need to look at, and then they got two little kids, and you gotta think about,
Yeah.
If I have to be at a meeting, how do I deal with that all? So, um,
Well, does Dan have any other candidates that uh,
He's put it out there a few times, I don't know.
Right.
He's actually, it's been interesting that he, rather than just saying, you know, the Republican town committee says, here are these people, and the Democratic town committee says, here are these people. He's actually made the effort to call and talk to people, and sometimes even have them come in to meet with him. Um, if he doesn't know who they are, so he gets a general idea of like, what's their, you know, if they want to be on the, library board, but they have no interest in libraries, like,
Yeah, I mean, I had a conversation with Dan, I'm unaffiliated, so it's, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, same, yeah, I, I spoke to Dan.
Yeah, yeah, so, so, I think they're still,
Okay, see, I've experienced.
Yep, they're still looking, but uh, hopefully it'll be soon, but I think we get started right away. I'm not gonna dump everything, I'll give you a box of stuff, because Kathy doesn't. I do, I have a big box.
Title only for the next, yeah, two weeks or something.
No, you're gonna be doing stuff, I'll, I'll, well,
So it seems like Roger would be a transition.
Yeah.
I think Nancy's,
Which is why I wanted to do it months ago.
Yeah, he's, he's gotta build something, you know, being part of this.
Yeah. So,
And again, Roger, you don't have to do it, it's, you know, it's entirely up to you, right?
Yeah.
Just because somebody nominates you, don't feel forced.
No, no, I understand that, and, and uh, uh, it'd be a challenge, but it's uh, I wouldn't mind that. I do other things during the day, and you know, during the week.
Yeah.
I'm with the Red Cross, so we go out to fires, and we help, you know, that has, but that's, that's hardly it, you know, that, yeah, once a month or something.
I mean, in theory, it should not be a lot of time, because everybody's a volunteer, everybody works. Everybody has families and vacation and all that kind of stuff, so this should be not taking, too much away from all of that. You do have to consider, yes, we have meetings twice a month. You shouldn't really have to be running around having meetings during the day and all that, some people have in the past, just because they, are interested in what's going on, or they want to see something, and they go and they check it out, doesn't have to happen that way.
With those meetings, too, I've noticed other commissions, sometimes they might, they can meet Wednesday, one month, they'll meet Tuesday, do a special, they cancel one meeting, but they do a special meeting,
Yes.
Tuesday.
Yes.
Right, so it's, you know.
And then, then, our meeting used to be on Tuesdays, and we changed to Wednesdays. If you, if you put your meeting schedule out, you have to approve it by the end of January, any, in any given year. And once it's posted, any meeting that has to happen at a different time, a different place, or a different day, has to be a special meeting.
You know, I'm just saying.
So you can do that, yes, but if coming up for the next year, you say, you know, Tuesdays are better for all of us, instead of Wednesdays. We changed to Wednesdays because of two people who've had work conflicts. They're not on a commission anymore. So, if you want to change, back to Tuesdays if you can, Mondays are not usually good.
I'm just throwing that out there.
Fridays are not.
So when I came in early, I, I spoke to Kathy, and, and I thought they said, uh, at one time, there was only one meeting a month.
Yes.
Then became two because of all the,
Because of the work we were doing, yes, especially the school projects, because we were having to, you know, approve, and we had meetings every week for a while. Special meeting, got Dave's laughing because he was there. But you just try not to do that, you try to hire all the right people, so you don't have to do that, um. Anything else we can vote?
So the motion's on the floor, right?
Yes.
So, you had a second?
Yeah, Tom's second.
I guess you guys will need to.
Yeah, and we had discussion, so I think we're good, yes?
Roger, are you good, yes, at least?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, done. Vice chair.
So vice chair is, you know, a nominee, Tom.
I need a second.
A second.
You're good with that?
I accept.
All right. Any more discussion on it? All in favor?
Dave, are you good on that?
Yeah, all in favor, I oppose, done, unless Dave, you wanted to do it.
No, but I do want to say that it's been an absolute pleasure, Nancy. Being with you for the past, what, four or five years? You've more than put in your time, God knows, and you've done an incredible job. And I thank you very, very much, my friend, for what you've done for this town.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, my, I would agree, my little experience here, I, you know, you can definitely tell. Again, don't leave yet, because.
No, I will. Well, so it's been a lot of years that I learned all this stuff, so. It does, so.
Just so I know, Jeff, how long have, have you been on, well, Dave's been on,
I don't know, January, maybe February, I don't know, months, yeah.
You were like last, maybe you're like nine months or something like that.
Uh, I think it was like November.
Okay.
November, December.
Like January, February, maybe.
Twenty-four, yeah.
I'm twenty-five.
Okay, I got brought in.
Yeah, we all started.
Yeah.
I was in February.
And Dave's been several years?
Yeah, it's been like five years, I think, or?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, man, I was asked by the Board of Ed.
Right, to just do the,
Just do that project.
Yeah.
And then after.
Couple of people resigned.
Yeah. They asked me to become a,
Become a permanent, which is good, because you've been, I think all the different construction experience that you all have, some the same, some different, which is good. Dave is like a building manager type person who just knows how all different parts of buildings work, and, he has lots of good input there, um.
Well, it's a good team.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Play good.
And that's something that we always found, I mean, we had a few hiccups along the way years ago on some projects, and, everybody always said, we live and die as a team, we all made this decision to do this, it didn't work out that well, or, you know, things like that, so, you just try to get as much information together from the experts, and then we make decisions. And, I mean, all of them, actually, all the projects have turned out well in the end. Like, Police Station came out really good, so did the firing range, the schools are in good shape.
Yep. I was just,
Go ahead.
If that's okay?
Yeah.
Um, because I know when I was interviewed for the position, I came and spoke in front of everybody and kind of gave what I did for a living, what my job was, that, so we all know what each other does. Do we give a brief synopsis in writing of, like a resume of, okay, I do, I've done this in my lifetime, you've done this. So we all know what our strong points and our weak points are, because with Nancy and the folks before, we all did know that, but it kind of took time to learn what everybody did. So maybe hit the ground running this time with, here's a brief synopsis of my life, what I've done in my life.
Well,
Jell, a little,
Family in town, that might take a while.
Yeah, yeah, you can write something up and we can, um, give it out to everybody.
We're talking about it.
Yeah, we're talking about whichever, yeah, we can do it another meeting, but, you know, we're putting something together so everybody knows.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, congratulations, Chair and Vice Chair.
Thank you.
I am going to send an email out in the next day or two to the whole entire project team, saying, this, and I will also let Lisa, the town clerk, know, because she has to keep track of all that stuff. And that, I will ask that you be included in all the different emails that go out of, on things, so that you know what's going on. And I don't include everybody usually unless it's important, uh, partly because the whole thing of, can't do, kind of quorum, but can't do all that discussion.
Yep.
Usually, like, I, I emailed Rick, I hadn't heard anything from him, I emailed him Monday morning, I said, what's going on, what do you, yeah, so what do you, he sent me a real, he sent me what Save More had sent him as far as their update, and said we would talk about it, at the meeting, which was fine, I just wanted to make sure everything is gonna,
So Rick is actually the point of contact for the high school, I, I mean, for us to find out,
He's like a representative.
What the hell's going on?
He's, he's the owner's representative, so he's on top of all of that, he's the one that's, he's like the main person.
Yeah, you're not contacting the company, like the,
Yeah, you wouldn't contact the company directly, yes, right.
What's going on, how come there's,
Yeah.
That's why I think it makes sense to have them on all these projects, especially the bigger ones, I mean,
Yeah.
They kind of organize all that stuff.
Yeah, I think so, even the smaller ones, have somebody who, that's their focus, and I know that's John's title, for the town, right, project manager, project. But, we have to find out, does that mean he's gonna manage all the projects, or, because I think it's a lot for one person to do, because what STV has is they have, they have a team, they have all, they have all these people. We had a bigger team for the school projects, because there was more involved with it, but, you know, they've got architects and people that can do estimating, and, you know, all these people that they bring in as part of the team, as part of the project, uh, depending on when they come in, sometimes you bring in an owner's rep in the very beginning, before you're just, you're just sort of thinking about it. And they help you, they're possible, but they help you flesh it out, they help you figure out what the initial costs might be, you know, they might, it might be a good thing to help, have somebody like that, brings in someone to help us find a location for the animal shelter, just as an example. But, we'll see.
Yeah, the animal shelter, definitely. Building of all those different companies, you know, it's not just like, you know,
Yeah.
Electrical.
Have to look at that, so.
That's all.
We gotta get him on that. Well, yeah, we good to go? Dave, go ahead.
Suppose we close the meeting?
Second, second, I got a second, all in favor, I oppose, go.
Thank you, everybody.
The thirteen.
Thirteen seconds.
It's the second, yeah, we're the,